Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 3rd, and I officially call this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to call on Commissioner Cowan for our invocation. And if you would please do the pledge of allegiance to, please, Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, Lord, we thank you, dear God, for your blessings, Lord. We thank you, dear Lord, for our county. And God, we just pray that you give us wisdom and grace tonight, Lord God, to make the right decisions for the county. Lord, we thank you for all things you've done for us here. We ask you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Cowan. I did not, I once again neglected to read our thought for the day, which is, success is not the key to happiness. Happiness is the key to success. If you love what you're doing, you'll be successful, and that's by the late Herman Cain. All right, this time, I'll seek a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I had a few questions, and I was talking to our county attorney. If we could answer them, then I won't request for those consent agenda items to be taken off. So 8C, which is the one that I'm looking at, is in regards to that the public works is going to be utilizing ARPA funds. I remember we did allocate funds for capital improvement. I just want to know how much funding, I know it's 20%, but how much did we actually allocate to public works from ARPA? Because I don't recall.
Mr. Cooper, do you recall?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I do believe Mr. Clegg is available.
Come on down, Chester, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. If I recall, it was a million dollars.
A million, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That answered my question. And the next one was 8D in regards to the roundabout. I know that's your area. I didn't want to overstep that, but I had residents reach out to me about the roundabout, because they said they didn't have any conversation or discussion, so I don't know what it consists of. So if you could probably answer that, or Chester.
This roundabout is being installed by Georgia Department of Transportation.
Okay.
And it'll be at Lover's Lane and the 162 connector. It's a safety issue there.
Okay.
And so they just, our environment will be providing electricity for lights and maintenance on the lights and the landscaping, once it's complete.
Okay. My questions have been answered, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any more questions before we entertain a motion to adopt the agenda? I'll entertain that motion now.
Do you still move?
I have a motion. I have a second.
Second?
Second, by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. All right, this time, item number four on the agenda is citizen comments. These comments are for agenda topics only. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Annette Alston. I'm speaking to agenda items E and F, dealing with public works. And we get that you want to widen the streets, Brown Bridge, or the traffic and everything the subdivisions are bringing, but we're pleading with you to please address the subdivisions that are already here first. We have followed the procedures, the process for having our streets within the subdivision resurfaced. We went online, filled out the paperwork, followed it up with phone calls and written What, I did speak to Mr. Cooper. He had said that we were on a list to be done, but my concern was, when I went online and I looked at the maintenance improvement grant list, Trelawney was only mentioned in connection to the roads leading up to it. No streets within the subdivision appeared to be slated to be resurfaced. If there is another list that has the streets listed within the Trelawney subdivision that are slated to be resurfaced, we just need to know, okay? And kind of get a timeline as to when that will happen. Our subdivision has been in existence for about 23 years, and not one street has been resurfaced in that entire time. Potholes have been filled from time to time, but there are cracks in the roads that are only getting worse, even with growth coming up through the cracks in the street, and it really looks horrible. As a covenant-protected subdivision, we do everything to try to maintain the look of our subdivision. Our property values are important to us. That's why we pay assessments each year. We want to make sure that our community looks the way it did when we moved into it. We do everything to maintain the grounds and ensure people are doing what they are supposed to do within the general upkeep of their properties. We do what we can to keep garbage off of the streets, but the roads, we are trusting and depending on the county to do what they are commissioned to do, and that is maintaining the county roads. I'm someone who believes that there should be a schedule so that maintenance of streets and roadways are addressed before they become a problem. The surplus that is mentioned in 8F, it would be great if you could use that for the roadways in our subdivision and other subdivisions I know are probably just as old. I understand there is a moratorium on building more subdivision, and that's really good because part of planning should include budgeting, general maintenance, resurfacing of roadways within the subdivisions that were going, and everyone seems to be in such a hurry to build. We look forward to hearing from you on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? That portion of our meeting is closed. At this time, we'll move to item five of the chairman's report. I have nothing to report at this time. Item six is the county manager's report. Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, board members, residents of the community that come before you today with the county manager's report. People, purpose, and processes, our focus today will be on our purpose, which is optimum service delivery. I want to provide construction updates today in relationship to fiscal year 2025. There have been several projects that are beginning to take shape, and some of those projects are as follows: the administration building, centralized storage, RL Cousins, and the Nelson Heights Community Center. Let's take a look at the administration building. The building stands to undergo major renovation, with all three floors seeing substantial improvements. Currently, the administration building permits are under review, and mobilization is underway. Slated completion date is October 2025. Let's look at centralized storage. Currently, we're in the building stage, and the main focus with this is record retention by way of having an archiving system. And the target date of completion there is of February of 2025. Nelson Heights Community Center. I want to talk a little bit about this because we want to move forward with getting Nelson Heights Community Center back where it needs to be, and what I want to do now is give you some historical context to let you know where we were, where we are, and where we plan to go. The historical context, August 15th of last year, the Nelson Heights entity came before this board to provide procedures and reference to their organization. The board gave some feedback. As a result of that, there were some things that the board suggested that could improve efficiency in relationship to the entity. August 21st, Representative from Dominion Leadership contacted the county manager's office and provided documentation that suggested that that entity was subleasing from the Nelson Heights, Inc. entity. As a result of that, August 30th, Nelson Heights representatives relinquished their responsibilities in terms of oversight of the actual building. And subsequently after that, September 26th, there was a town hall meeting to gauge the citizens' concerns in reference to what they think was needed in the community. And then December 5th, I provided this board with a general expectation of the programming that could be beneficial moving forward. Fast forward to this year, February 10th, I had opportunity to participate in a District Four Town Hall, and at that town hall, the SPLICE funding that was allocated for Nelson Heights was discussed. June of this year, we partnered with Newton County Schools, the Nutrition Department, so that seamless summer meals could continue for our youth and families of that community. And June 27th, we had our expo, where we had various prospective community partners, different public and private agencies, who were at Nelson Heights to let that community know what type of family preservation services that they could offer. And as of July of this year, different entities have shared their interest in moving forward in terms of providing services in their build. But it's important to note that we cannot put the cart before the horse, and here's The facility needs improvements, as suggested in the concept plan that you all will see. And when you look at these four rooms, the kitchen, the general floor area, the computer lab, and the bathroom area, it may look on the surface as being okay, but there are some improvements that are needed. Prior to, the prior, excuse me, the prior tenant's tenure, during the prior tenant's tenure, tenant's tenure, excuse me, key pieces of infrastructure were removed, which was led to the delay in reopening the center on a full-time basis. Critical equipment in the kitchen, including the stove, was removed, and over the years, the floors were apparently waxed without first stripping them. So additional pieces in the equip, in terms of equipment in the computer lab, were probably moved, removed as well. So, once renovations are completed, then I think a government entity, or a private entity, or a 501(c)(3) could possibly enter into an agreement with the county to move forward and provide enrichment services. As the Tier 1 projects conclude, I think it's important to understand that why the repairs in Nelson Heights can be elevated, even though it's a Tier 2 project. Upon review of the SPLICE documents that was provided by the District Four Commissioner, key components that we think we can provide services to, such as additional parking, campus beautification, upgrades to security, and addressing the floor needs, could be made with the $1 million allotment of the SPLICE funding that was approved by the voters. Here is a snapshot of the summary sheet and also the concept plan. And with the concept plan, items two, items four, item six, and item seven are all items that I've recommended and mentioned that were repairs are needed. We need to do something about the park. We need to do something about the tile on the floor, or the floor in itself. We need to do something about the restrooms. We need to do something about the security there. Why am I mentioning it now? Because District Four has an enormous amount of momentum right now. With the opening of Spring Hill Park, I think that it's very important that we look at addressing the needs of Nelson Heights Community Center with the same energy. And before I come back before this board on September 17th with a prospective task order, I'm going to ask the District Four Commissioner if he can find time in his schedule so that he and I could walk the facility again, just like we did on June 27th, so that he can identify critical needs in terms of improvement, so that we can get the building back up to standard where we can then provide an entity in there to provide the much-needed services for that community. RL Cousins. This is an eight-minute, million-dollar renovation project. Right now, we're in the permitted and mobilization phase, and it's expected to be completed in 2025 as well. Currently, there are four wings of the property. The two middle wings will be demolished to make a way for the new community center. Wing A will become the new home of Newton County Board of Elections and Registration. Juvenile Justice and Newton Family Connection will remain in Wing A. The cafeteria and kitchen will remain in partial Wing B, and CASA will remain in Wing C, and there are no major changes slated to be completed in Wing D. This concludes my county manager's report. Mr. Vice Chair, I yield back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Are there any questions for Mr. Cooper? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And just to Mr. Cooper, when we first was talking about Nelson Heights, remember there was a, we had an audit, I think there was some that was requested by, by the board, in which, you know, which I was totally in favor of, but the audit that Nelson Heights and Washrick had was two different audits, and I think Mr. Sanchez, who eventually the county hired to audit us, had a letter of engagement for J.C. Henderson, the chairman of Nelson Heights Community Center, which that was not the case. But nevertheless, there was a meeting here, right here, at this horseshoe, I think, if, if, I don't just remember the date. Do you remember the date, Commissioner Sanders?
I'm talking about that year?
Yeah, and last year. And whereas they discussed it and was talking about, so there was a real agreement that I, J.C. Henderson, had made with Ms. Freeman, which was, what's the name of them folks? But anyway, it was a school of children who, their parents wanted to go to school where they could have more, be paid more attention. And for a whole year, one year, from July to July, there was no funding, and she was in the building, and there had to be a way to pay the utility bills, which the board said, "We're not going to pay it." And so the only other option was that she paid, would pay the light bill in order to keep her students in that particular building. And what she wanted was some kind of agreement. I said, "Well, whatever you need in order to pay it," because we didn't want to see the children outside. But during the course of that time, we found out that they was abusing the childrens, because we filed a complaint with the Newton County Officer Sheriff. It should still be on record concerning that. And also, not only did we file that, because we had a video of her out in the parking lot where she lived, which was in Newton County, abusing the child, because the little boy wanted the other kids to know that he was being abused. So he sent, he sent the, I guess, email or the little video to my daughter's computer, and we looked on, we said, "Who is this? It looks just like that little boy up there, J.C." And we got a copy of it, and we gave it to, I think Commissioner Sanders may have had a copy, and whoever may want it, and we shared with the Sheriff's Department, and they went with it. So they were really, they were abusing childrens. So we asked the question, was, do we continue to let them stay up there? Or do we ask for someone from the Officer Sheriff to come in and look at what that transpired? And they all kind of rolled back on me and saying, "Well, like I was doing something wrong or illegal." Ms. Freeman also said, when she was with Mr. Nice, Ms. Nice Williams, she had said that she had talked to and spoke to all of the commissioners. It's on tape. If I'm not mistaken, Ms. Commissioner Sanders, she read it. I mean, she played it, not read it, but played it, and where everybody at that particular meeting could hear it. I was asked not to call them, because you didn't want, you know, it seemed like they didn't want to hear the truth. They were going on something with what they were trying to do, which, which I believed at times, and I still do. They just didn't want us up there in the building. And so, but it was still fine. But it's the way you do things and the way you don't do things. You don't accuse people of doing something wrong when they haven't did anything. So what I said, well, they said, there were Anthony Henderson, my son, who was just trying to help his community, who is a representative on the city council, said he was a convicted felon, said it was a felony. They said I was stealing money. It's hard to steal something when you don't, you're not getting a cent. The only thing, what was going on was, we were working, looking out for the community, Mr. Cooper, and I'd asked then, and I still ask, that you work with me. I don't, I don't think I should be censored by the county manager, maybe at the, at board, on working in the community, on something, on a community center that's in District Four, same as I worked with Spring Hill. So don't censor me, and censor the peoples in Nelson Heights. The floor, that was a new floor. It had been up there about six months. They paid for it, they got me in and put it in, so I was, I don't know how the floor would be damaged. I think the building had been there about 10, ever since Kathy Morgan was there, because that's when we did the Real McCutcheon. So that's 10 to 15 years. And so surely, he should need some problems and work on it, but that was something that was known. The only thing that I had ever asked, as the district commissioner, was that you have a community meeting with the people, so they make sure you knew what they wanted, and so they knew what we were doing. And somehow or another, it seemed that Nelson Heights got bypassed. We had also asked that the cameras remain on, because people, when they're not being watched, do some bad stuff. I had heard that one lady had got raped out there, since we cut the cameras off. But that, you know, and so, but I tracked her down, you know, because, hey, this type of person I am. I talked to her. She said she was taken from the community center over to Home Depot. I heard that the kids who shoot basketball all night long there, which I can hear the ball go boom, 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 12:01 at night, which it may be used for some people, but we also tried to keep it closed, so that some of the older peoples in the community wouldn't have to hit it all night long. Sometime, we hear a little bit of shooting up in there. So I'm pretty sure you might could go to the City of Cleveland Police Department, they probably give you a record of what they may have been called out there for. So the intention that we had there was to make sure first that there wasn't a nuisance in the community, make sure the bathroom wasn't used for people to go and do illegal and bad stuff in the restrooms and stuff, and we paid somebody to do that. And last but not least, the food and program, the food program only lasts about two, two and a half weeks to three weeks. During the summer, the other two or three weeks, the children were hungry, because a small portion of them came to our house and asked us if we could help, and which we did, Sandy and I. So, you know, there's a whole, been a whole lot of talk what we want to do for Nelson Heights, but there's nobody actually coming in and finding out what is, what are the needs for Nelson Heights. And when you, Nelson Heights is being ran by possibly a county manager and the commissioners who doesn't live in the community, they don't know those people, and they don't know somewhat the needs that we have there. Closing down is not right. It should have remained open, and then you set up a time, a week or a month or something to open it up, or something like that. But it should have been something that should have been told by the community. There should have been more than just the talk of an olive branch between myself and you, as far as trying to get something did up there. It's got to be did from the commissioner's perspective, because I was the one who was elected. Unless, unless I have been censored, unless I have, my powers have been taken as the board or commission meeting, unless I have been removed from the District Four Commissioner, the lead should be the commissioner, just as we have been, you have been lead, led by, led by, the other commissioners in their districts. You've been led by them saying, "Well, what do you want? Just work together with you. We haven't got that over there." The stove, the other stove had burned out. We had donations and bought the stove that was there. The formative, once y'all had made the decision, said, "We didn't want it there," and you said, "We relinquished, we gave it back," or whatever, which I wasn't at the meeting. And I said, and I walked up and gave, "Well, take it back, because I want all these lies told on us and my family, and we're just trying to help." But once y'all had took it back, we was given eight hours. I think Patrick can tell you, if he would, he sent me a certified letter to my home, saying, "You got eight hours, get your stuff out." We got our stuff out in eight hours, and then you complain about the stove. So, you know, we, we, we still are Nelson Heights Community Service 501(c), we still are active on the, on the state's website, and so we still are doing things in the community. In fact, I regret that I hadn't kind of mentioned it. We gave away book bags and fans, and we still are feeding people. And we're looking, we're looking, the community has said, "We need a community center, a space in our community." Whereas when the government get mad, they don't come back and take it back. And then they say they don't even want to re-run the way it was running. I'm sure there's been several people, excuse me for taking a little long, I just want to just kind of get it all out right now. There've been several people who have used it in the past for, when someone repasses, have reached out to the county, and those are still close to them. There are several children who need to be tutored in the afternoon, who really needs it. Reading is bad. We give out, we've still given away books, and reading is still bad. They needed a, somebody giving books and helping their kids in the afternoon with their homework and stuff. Rise Academy, which is down off the SS Road, is full. They haven't go back and reschedule, instead of three hours a day, maybe one hour. They got so many kids who are behind, they're behind because of the pandemic, and we're being further, the kids are being further behind, because there's no places they can come and get the help that they need. So, and I understand it's boring to people. I understand, and I don't want to be boring to anybody. In fact, sometimes I'd be up here, I'm bored up here, I'm behind this, behind the horseshoe. I'm bored, because there's a whole lot of stuff going on. But if we're going to help our community, kids in the community, if we want to push down crime, if we want to, maybe teenage pregnancies, you got to give the kids something to do. And I think up until, I'd be on the board, this is my 27th year, we haven't found the right solution in order to help our childrens, and this procrastination is not going to work. Work with district commissioner, and I'm going to close with this. Same way that I think Commissioner Everett said, we worked with him when he wanted to put a, what, a $5 million fire station in his district. There was nobody that said, "We don't want to put a $5 million in the district." We were behind him 100% because we knew that's what the people wanted, and we want to do it. Now, what the people want in Nelson Heights is for the place to be back open, and they want for it to be under recreation. That's all they want. That's all they want. And they want somewhere for their kids to go. And so I don't know why we're procrastinating and doing something for our childrens. Thank you.
And so let me know when you're available next week, like I mentioned earlier.
I'm available tomorrow.
So we can walk.
Tomorrow.
Put time tomorrow. All right. I'll give you a time later. Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to reiterate the email that I sent, now that I'm looking out in the audience in regards to our seating. I've had a lot of constituents reach out to me about how uncomfortable the benches are. We used to have padding on the benches. I don't know where they are located. I have no idea. That was before I came on board, and it was before the pandemic, they took them off. So they are asking, why are they sitting on hard benches? And sometimes our meetings go long, so is there something that we can assist our residents to also be comfortable like we are while they're sitting in the audience? Thank you.
Mr. Henderson, you have about a minute.
Thank you. They were donated, was not given, but donated by the church, one of the big churches, because they had padding for the board of commissioners, and I think after Chairman Ellis didn't come, they took, they took the padding back.
All right. We, it's time to go into our hearing portion of our meeting. It's 7:30, so with that, Ms. Appleweight.
Good evening, board of commissioners, or any other members. Our first petition this evening is old business. This is a modification that was heard about 60 days ago, and was tabled for a community meeting to be held. meeting to be held. It is MOD twenty-four dash zero 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 two. And again, the proposal is to modify the condition of zoning for the initial rezoning petition, which was REZ oh four zero five four, and that was condition three C, which states that streets shall have sidewalks on both sides. The existing zoning is R one and R two, single-family residential, and part of it is in the Salem Overlay Tier One. It's located on Spring Road, sixty-two point five eight acres, tax ID numbers thirteen dash one and thirteen dash six six. This, of course, is in Commissioner District Two. The owners are listed as AHV Partners LLC, and our petitioner and representative today is Mr. Mark Walton. And again, the applicant's request to modify the condition of zoning for REZ oh four dash zero five four, just to remove condition three C, which has to do with the sidewalks being placed on both sides of the streets. And, uh, this is a little background, this subdivision initially came before the board in two thousand and five to approve for ninety-eight lots for the Lynn Hurst Estate subdivision. Phase one was final platted, some of the lots were built out, however, the sidewalks were not put in in that phase. The, um, so today we have a developer who has, you know, picked up the subdivision again, and for continuity, they are requesting that that condition be removed, so that there won't be sidewalks, um, you know, in just half the subdivision. So the existing condition to be modified would be, um, to the owner's agreement, to the following standards, three C, streets shall have sidewalks on both sides, and the condition, uh, what they're proposing to do, what the applicant's proposing, is to modify the conditions to remove it entirely from the conditions, um, from oh four. And we do have the history on six twenty-five, the BOC tabled the case, so community, community meeting can be held. The community meeting was held, and it was a vibrant discussion. Um, I think the residents, uh, in interactions with the developer, uh, some of them, most of them did not, um, mind that there's no sidewalks in the phase two, but they're trying to work out with the developer, you know, if they can perhaps purchase a lot in phase two to do an amenity and that kind of thing. That would all be a private arrangement, but, um, you know, some, we did have some success with that meeting. So this are the original minutes from March fifteenth of two thousand and five, and I just highlighted the section, and it will be condition three C, as shown on the board, which they're asking to remove, to modify and remove. This is the plat, so phase one we see is platted here, and then this is the proposed phase two section. This is just an aerial showing it, just to give you some perspective, we're on Spring Road, this is Underwood Crossing, we're in Rockdale County to the left, and this is our subdivision here, phase one, and then the proposed phase two. And we see the zonings, it is, uh, two, dual zone, R two and R one. Salem overlay is in a part of it, and of course, it's in District Two. In conclusion, the parcels are phase two, the Lynn Hurst subdivision, which was approved in two thousand and four by the BOC with conditions. Developer has now returned to finish the subdivision, um, sidewalks were not placed in there, and they are requesting that the sidewalk condition be removed for consistency. So should the board of commissioners recommend approval of the modification to condition three of the two thousand and five rezoning petition? Staff recommends the following conditions be applied to the property. So should the modification petition be approved by the board of commissioners? It should be approved conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated condition. Where this condition conflicts with the stipulations and offerings contained in any letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the board of commissioners, and one, to the owner's agreement, to abide by the following development standards and regulations, which is A, condition number three C of the petition, REZ oh four dash zero five four, streets shall have sidewalks on both sides, shall be removed, and B, all other conditions of the original rezoning dated March fifteenth of two thousand and five and approved by the board of commissioners shall apply. Are there any questions for staff? If not, Mr. Walton is here.
Any questions for staff? All right, this time, we will open up our hearing, the, those who want to speak in favor, those who want to speak in favor will have ten minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. You have ten minutes.
Vice Chair Commissioners, I'm Mark Walton with Patrick and Associates. Our office is at nine twenty-eight Black Lawn Road in Conyers, Georgia. Um, I'm not gonna use anywhere near the ten minutes. Director Appleweight summarized everything. Commissioner Mason was there for the meeting, it was a very good meeting with the community, and I did want to throw in that I had a subsequent meeting with Mr. Trevor Berry, one of the residents at Lynn Hurst Phase One, and basically showed him a couple of lots in Phase Two that might be suitable for the amenity area, and basically had a good meeting. And that's all I really want to say, other than I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. I would assume you want to save the remainder of the ten minutes for rebut, if you need that, right?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else want to speak in favor? Anybody wants, anybody else want to speak in favor? That portion of our hearing is closed. We'll now open the portion of the meeting, the, for those who want to speak against this request, those who want to speak against this request, you have ten minutes to do so, please state your name and address for the record. Anybody, anyone want to speak in opposition? That portion of our meeting is closed. Ms. Appleweight? I believe this is District Two. Mr. Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Walton. Thank you, Shayna, for putting together that amazing town hall we had. I think it was very, very productive. Um, I think the residents walked away, uh, happy and satisfied with this particular process and how they want to move forward. I'm glad to hear that they had a follow-up meeting, uh, in regards to the additional amenities that this particular subdivision would like to see, uh, within their community as well, so that was great to hear. So with that being said, uh, I'd like to move that we approve MOD two four dash zero 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 two.
I have a motion to approve. We'll have a second.
Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, would I be with recommended conditions?
Yes, that will be with recommended conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion, is there a second? I will second that motion. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you, Ms. Appleweight. Uh, for the new business portion of our hearing, our zoning part of the meeting, you can, you're next up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Our next, uh, petition this evening, uh, the subject site information, case number is REZ twenty-four dash zero 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 eight. We do have companion cases for this, one will be heard, um, today, if this first petition is approved, which is a conditional use permit. The other one was heard a couple of months ago, it's the overlay tier change, which the board approved back then. The existing land use map is a development node, the existing zoning is R three, single-family residential, and it's in the Salem Overlay Tier Three. Proposed zoning is OI, which is Office Institutional. Character areas established, suburban core, watershed, Yellow River, and it's located at one two seven one zero and one two seven two zero Brown Bridge Road. The parcel sizes are point six seven acres and one point zero eight acres approximately. The tax ID numbers are thirteen dash nine zero A and thirteen dash nine zero. This is also located in Commissioner District Two. The owner is Dreammakers Youth Foundation, Inc., and our petitioner and representative today is Mr. John Nix. So the applicant's intent is to rezonate a total of one point seven five acres approximately to Office Institutional, in order to expand the commercial daycare center that is currently there. Just a brief history, on seven one, two thousand and four, the planning commission approved the overlay tier change to tier three for both parcels, one two seven one zero and one two seven two zero Brown Bridge Road. And on seven sixteen, the board of commissioners approved the overlay tier change as well to tier three for both parcels. On, uh, August twenty-seventh, planning commission recommended approval of the rezoning to Office Institutional. In conclusion to findings, provided that staff's recommended conditions are incorporated into the development of the site, the proposed rezoning to OI for the one point seven five acres total, those are both parcels, is consistent with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan, and with the approved zonings in the area. The applicant intends to expand and continue the daycare center use on both properties. And we do have our site plan analysis, um, the plan was submitted on May twenty-fifth to our department, and again, the applicant is proposing to rezonate OI for the daycare center. And, you know, given the existing zoning and development in the area, the proposed zoning may be appropriate for the area. And in conclusion, given the designation of the flume as a development node, staff is of the opinion that the rezoning may be appropriate, since it will be compatible with neighboring properties and uses. Recommended conditions, so should the petition be approved by the board of commissioners? It should be approved, OI, Office Institutional, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions, and where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the board of commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards, A, limit the number of total occupants to the occupant load set by the Newton County Fire Marshal. B, provide a copy of the Bright From the Start state license for the subject location to Development Services before any business license can be issued, and maintain the Bright From the Start state license while in operation. C, provide a sprinkler inspection to the Newton County Fire Marshal. Inspection must be approved prior to the release of a business license. D, prior to the release of the business license, provide a copy of an approved fire inspection from the Fire Marshal to Development Services, and also will complete an annual fire inspection from Newton County Fire Services. E, maintain compliance with section five one zero dash two one zero of the Newton County zoning ordinance. F, prior to any construction, addition, or removal of walls within the structure, the applicant must apply for all required building permits. G, must have an approved play area surrounded with a four-foot tall fence before the issuance of a business license. H, obtain environmental health approval before the issuance of a business license. I, complete a minor plat combination of the two properties. And the J, office hours will be Monday to Friday, six AM to six PM. And K, the pool area must be secured or fenced off. I think in this case, they've already filled the pool in, but this should, um, be completed totally when lot one two seven two zero is incorporated into the expansion. This is the location that we have. Uh, the two parcels, the daycare is currently in the rear parcel right now, and they're hoping to expand to the building in front. It was just a close-up showing the two, so right now they're operating in the back here. Zoning R three, Salem Overlay, and this was approved recently by the board, so they're now into, in tier three. Development node is, um, the flume, District Two is the location, and this is a survey as presented, uh, by the applicant. This is just, uh, the building in front is the one two seven two zero Brown Bridge Road, that's where they're hoping to expand into, and this is the building for the existing daycare that they have now. Are there any questions for staff? If not, Mr. Nix is here.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Appleweight. This time, we will open the portion of our hearing for those in favor of the request. Uh, you'll have ten minutes to speak. For those who want to speak in favor, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening, uh, Vice Chair and Commissioners, John Nix, nine four five Bank Street, for the applicant. Uh, sitting, standing, not sitting, next to my, to my left is Nikki Wilson, the principal of the daycare center that we're here to talk about tonight. Just a very brief history, I know you've heard this, this summary before, uh, the how, the structure to the rear of the property, the lot, has been operating as a non-conforming use since nineteen eighty-nine. The front property was a single-family residence. In fact, the woman that operated the daycare center beginning in nineteen eighty-nine resided in the front house for a number of years. Uh, in twenty seventeen, the foundation purchased, no, they began operations, I'm sorry, leased the property. They've been operating it since twenty seventeen as a daycare. The front property and the rear property were acquired in twenty twenty-three by the foundation, and what they're trying to do now is combine the two properties. They would operate on the footprint of the existing building, so the buildings themselves are not going to be expanded, they're just going to be converted on the front building to serve as additional classrooms. Uh, I'm gonna let her briefly describe the center and the operation, just as a reminder of what they do there, and then I'm gonna give a brief zoning analysis, and we'll reserve the rest of our time.
Good evening. I'm Nikki Wilson, I'm the founder of Dreammakers Youth Foundation. Uh, we're a nonprofit organization that works with kids with special needs and their families. Um, our goal is to enable them to be as independent as possible. Another thing that we strive to do is we want people to become aware and be empathetic towards those with special needs. Um, so, part of our strategic plan was to eventually offer a childcare center, an integrated childcare center. So we serve kids with special needs and typically developing kids there. Um, we started leasing in two thousand seventeen, um, and we're full. And we purchased in two thousand, last year, um, with the hopes of expanding into the house in front, so that we could serve more kids. We plan to transition our after-school program up into the house, and then our next step will be to offer, uh, Georgia pre-K services where the after-school program was. We look forward to this opportunity. Um, we purchased the project, the, um, properties, we had to purchase them together, the owners were not willing to sell them separately, so we purchased them together, um, and anticipated us to be able to eventually, uh, expand our program. So, we've been at this for a while and looking forward to continued business in Newton County.
Thank you so much. Uh, would you like to reserve the remainder of your time for rebut, if needed? Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor of REZ two four zero 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 eight? That portion of our hearing is closed. The next portion of our meeting will be for those who want to speak in opposition. Those who want to speak in opposition, you'll have ten minutes to do so, please state your name and address for the record. Anyone want to speak in opposition? That portion of our meeting is closed. Ms. Appleweight, and I believe this is District Two again, Mr. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, of course, it looks like our planning commission did their due diligence and approved this petition, uh, by a vote of five to zero. Uh, and so, um, because of, uh, what we see that, um, this school wanted to provide to the community, uh, I'll move forward and, uh, move that we approve REZ two four dash zero 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 eight.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Mr. Vice Chair, one woman, please, would I be with recommended conditions?
Yes, with the recommended conditions. Thank you for keeping me on track with that. Appreciate it.
I will second that. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That hearing is closed, and we will transition to the, the partner cup, is that right, Ms. Appleweight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, our next case was, is a companion case, the one that was just heard, um, so we moved forward to this, since the rezoning was approved. Uh, this is case number CUP twenty-four dash zero 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 eight, and again, the companion cases would have been the previous rezoning, as well as the overlay tier change as shown above. Proposed use is for the commercial child daycare center, and again, the addresses are one two seven one zero and one two seven two zero Brown Bridge Road. Parcel sizes point six seven and one point zero eight acres respectively, tax IDs thirteen dash nine zero A and thirteen dash nine zero. The flume is a development node, current zoning is R three, in the Salem Overlay Tier Three, we're in the Yellow River watershed, and in District Two. And again, the owners are the Dreammakers Youth Foundation, Inc., and our petitioner is Mr. John Nix. And the intent is the same, um, to, you know, expand the existing commercial daycare into the new building, and we have the history as previously read before, with the planning commission meeting, approving on seven one, twenty twenty-four, and the BOC approving for the overlay tier change on seven sixteen, twenty twenty-four, and again, the planning commission approving for the cup on eight twenty- commission approving for the cup on eight twenty-seven twenty twenty-four. Site plan analysis is similar, we received the plans on May twenty-fifth, and in terms of the fencing, property development standards, general design standards and signage, um, the site plan was appropriate. Uh, the property, it has a paved entrance and parking lot in the front of the building, and the existing building meter exceeds all minimum building setbacks per section two seven zero dash zero five zero B, and the property development standards of a twenty twenty unified development ordinance. Any signage will meet the signage requirements of the Newton County Ordinance, section five twenty-five zero two zero D. This is the applicable section for the daycare, um, it is included in your packet, so I won't read through it unless there are any questions. And then in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the conditional use request to expand the commercial daycare center into a new building location with staff recommended conditions. Um, the conditions are the same as previously stated, I don't know if I need to read it into the record again, um, or unless there are any questions, but they're exactly the same as for the rezoning. And of course, we've got our aerial, um, these are the two lots, this is just a close up showing the two parcels. Zoning is R three, Salem overlay tier three, development node is the flume, District Two, Commissioner District Two, and of course, we have our survey. And we've got, um, this is a ground view location of the buildings. And if there are any questions for staff, if not, Ms. Nix is here too.
Any questions for staff? All right, we'll move into the portion of the meeting where those who want to speak in favor of conditional use permit two four dash zero 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 eight, those who want to speak in favor, state your name and address for the record, you have ten minutes to speak in favor.
Uh, John Nix, nine four five Bank Street. Um, this is the final step in our half marathon for this property. Uh, this is a step that's necessary, quite candidly, in order for her to be able to expand under the plan that she's presented, I'd ask your consideration, and we'll reserve the rest of our time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll reserve the remainder of that. Anyone want to speak, that, that will, anyone else want to speak in favor? That portion of our meeting is closed. Those who want to oppose this conditional use permit, you may speak at this time, you have ten minutes to do so. Those who want to speak in opposition, that portion of our meeting is closed. Commissioner, uh, Ms. Appleweight and Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Nix and Ms. Wilson for your presentation uh, today as well, I forgot to mention on the last one. Uh, so I move that we approve, uh, C U P two four dash zero 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 eight.
We have a motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, sorry.
With staff recommendations. Yes, with staff recommendations.
We have a motion, I'll second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, that passes as well. We have another conditional use permit hearing, Ms. Appleweight.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Our next petition this evening is C U P twenty-four dash zero 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 seven. This conditional use permit is for a special events facility. The existing zoning is highway commercial in the South River watershed. The location is unit thirty-two twenty-nine Salem Road, and this is in a shopping plaza, so the parent parcel for the entire plaza is thirty-two forty-nine Salem Road, so you'd find it under the thirty-two forty-nine, and this is just a suite in there. Parcel size is six point nine five acres, the tax ID is zero zero one two eight dash one four two, also located in Commission District Two. The owner is Salem Square LLC, petitioner today is Shondell Allison, and they are also going to be representing themselves. The applicant's intent is to operate a special events facility for weddings, reunions, and other special event gatherings, uh, based on the site plan that was submitted by the applicant to Development Services on May twenty-eight. Staff offers the following consist, conditions, considerations. So the site plan and the letter of intent indicate that the location for a special events facility, the actual size of the building is approximately fifty-six eighty-eight square feet, and it's located within the shopping plaza, and there is adequate parking in the shopping plaza for this facility. Uh, we'll see pictures of that in a few minutes. For the history, on eight twenty-seven twenty twenty-four, the planning commission recommended approval of the cup, uh, this was my five zero vote. The applicable section is section five one zero dash five nine five, which is, um, governs special events facilities and then indoor recreational facilities. Um, I won't read through this, it is included in your packets, unless there are any questions. And in conclusion, the proposed special events facility is located on a Georgia State route, allowing for easy access to the property. The property is large enough to accommodate ingress and egress, there is adequate area for parking, as it will be shared with other commercial businesses in the plaza. If this use meets the standards set forth in section five one zero dash five nine five, special events facility, it should be approved. Staff recommends that should the board of commissioners approve the conditional use request to allow the special events facility, that the approval be with the following recommended conditions. And I do have to read this into the record, so should this petition be approved by the board of commissioners, it should be approved for a cup for a special events facility, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions, and where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the board of commissioners. So for one, C U P twenty-four dash zero 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 seven is to allow a special events facility. Two, comply with all Newton County fire codes. Three, no fireworks are allowed for any special event that's going to be held there. Four, adequate parking shall be provided for guests in the existing parking lot for the plaza. Five, guest occupancy shall be set by the Fire Marshal. Six, all events are to be conducted inside. Seven, must obtain and maintain a Newton County business license. Eight, obtain all permits required from Development Services, the Fire Marshal, Transportation Department, and the Water Authority. And the reason that they're here for the cup today is because they're over five thousand square feet and they can seat more than fifty people in the building. This is the location, this is on Salem Road, just before you get to Rockdale, there's like a Dollar General as the anchor store that's currently in there, so it's that shopping plaza. And this is just a close up, so this is the Dollar General building, and they're going to be located in the same building with, in the adjacent suite. The zoning is highway commercial, it's in District Two, this is the floor plan that was submitted by the applicant. So you've got the entrance here, and this will be the hall, and the bathroom facilities at the back, and like a little kitchen area, and this is a patio outside. So this is the location here, so it's this suite at the end here, and we'll get a better angle of that, so you see the parking, so there is adequate parking, there's going to be shared parking with all the other businesses. This is the entrance in there, and they're currently, they currently have some renovations to do, so they'll need to submit their permits for that. So just to give you some perspective, it's going to be in this suite here, where the arrow is. And this is just a side view from the entrance. And if there are any questions, if not, Ms. Allison is here today.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Sanders.
I just have one question, isn't there an event center already in the shopping center?
I believe so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was in the right area. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Commissioner Cowan.
Uh, Shana, has the owner given consent to this?
Yes, sir.
Who's the owner of this?
It is Salem Square LLC.
Okay, but they've given authority to the county to allow it?
Yes, as part of the application packet, there is a section in there for them to give consent for this process to move forward, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comments or questions? All right, we'll begin the portion of our meeting for those who want to speak in favor of conditional use permit two four dash zero 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 seven, those who want to speak in favor, you have ten minutes to do so, please state your name and address
Hello, good evening. My name is Shondell Allison, I'm here representing, um, T's Royal Palace. Um, I'm here today asking permission to be granted to open the place, um, we're going to provide excellent service, it's a bigger event space than the one that is there right now, we plan on providing a lot of packages, um, we also have a restaurant there, so we would also provide food and, you know, different things. So basically, you can just come in with your clothes or whatever for your wedding or whatever occasion, and everything will be provided, so I'm asking if I can be granted that permission. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm here to talk about this event center.
You state your name and address.
Oh, sorry, Kevin Christie, I'm fiancé of. So, this place be rented, it will be rented with a package, it also becomes with accurate security, it also will be renting with a county sheriff for every event, what's about to happen inside of there, so, we're looking forward for you guys to please rent, give us that life, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Adam Edlin, I'm actually the owner of uh, this property. I just wanted to make sure I was out here for Ms. Allison, uh, to let you guys know what a fantastic tenant she has been for us, she cares not only about her business, but about the entire property. Um, I understand there were, are some concerns about the property's frontage and trash, and a lot of the neighbors dumping their trash there, and I just wanted to come and talk about that. If you go there now, it's been completely resolved, the last time before, actually a couple of weeks ago, that we got a complaint from a neighbor, was in twenty eighteen, that was dealt with, I haven't heard anything until maybe two or three weeks ago. Um, it was an issue with the Dollar General, we put pressure on them, we got it clean, Ms. Allison has photos, the plan is to maintain that level of cleanliness, and I just want to let everyone know if there's ever an issue with that sort of uh, stuff, or landlord issues, we're more than happy to take any questions, or help anyone, or do anything we need to do to get it up to the appropriate levels it needs to be. But Ms. Allison has been a fantastic tenant, and if you guys allow her to do this, she's going to do a fantastic job for that area, so I just wanted to make sure I was here to let all of you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor? That portion of our meeting is closed, we'll move to the portion of our meeting where we allow those to speak in opposition of conditional use permit two four zero 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 seven. Anyone wish to speak in opposition? That portion of our meeting is closed. Ms. Appleweight and Commissioner Mason, you definitely win the prize tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, it looks like, once again, our planning commission, um, has approved this petition by a vote of five to zero, so it sounds like they've done their due diligence, and so I move to approve C U P two four dash zero 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 seven.
With?
With recommended conditions.
Thank you, I have a motion and I'll second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It carries.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, those are all the petitions for today.
Thank you, Ms. Appleweight.
Yeah.
All right, the hearing portion of our meeting is now closed, we'll move back to our regular agenda, and I believe, Mr. Harold, you were finished, correct? Thank you. Okay, manager report, we have no unfinished business, we move on to uh, item number eight, which is the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
I have a motion. Have a second, Ms. Ms. Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, five zero. That brings us to item nine, which is a, an item that I had asked be put on the agenda, and I, I'm not, I'm not going to ask for a vote, um, I don't believe that's appropriate, I believe it'll be up to the county manager to exercise this, if we want, if the, the county wants to do this. We have quite a few pending outstanding property casualty lawsuits with the county right now, and the firm that it, that brokers our property casualty insurance, McGriff Insurance, uh, has offered in order to help mitigate some of our risks and minimize some of the risk, they've offered to perform a risk, I hesitate to call it a risk audit, it's a risk review. They've ought to offer to do a risk review of every department within the county, free, absolutely free. Uh, now, if we decide to go a step further, they've got other services they offer, but they, but they've asked, they've, they've offered to do a, a, I'll call it a risk assessment, uh, for each county department, that's fire, that's uh, sheriff, that's finance, that's HR, that's everywhere, free of charge, so, I would, I'm going to, I'm going to put Mr. Cooper with, with uh, Mr. Hayes, and so they can discuss, uh, whether or not we want to move forward with that. I would, I would heavily suggest, and I'm just one member of this board, that we take advantage of that. Um, we, we've got some pretty heavy hitting suits coming down the track, and we, we're going to, we're going to need all the help we can get, um, to offset or, or mitigate risk going forward, to, to even retain the property casualty insurance that we have. So, that was just, if, if, if you want to, if you want to ask a question about that, I don't, I don't have a lot of information, it was just a suggestion, just a...
Mr. Chairman, could I add a little, a little context? So, presently, there are claims pending against the county or a county agency, the claimed value of those claims, not what they're actually worth, but what the, the claimant is seeking is in excess of seven million dollars. That's the bad news. The good news, at least the good news for this board, is only one of those claims is asserted against an entity or a department that's under the direct supervision of the, of the board of commissioners. The other claims, which account for the overwhelming roughly six and a half million dollars worth of those claims, are pending against constitutional officers that you have no direct control over. Um, they, those claims are, however, covered by your insurance, the insurance that the board of commissioners, uh, acquires. The law also imposes an obligation on the board of commissioners to fund and pay judgments rendered against constitutional officers. So I, I, I don't want everybody, anybody leaving here thinking that all of these claims are the result of departments that report to the manager or directly to the board of commissioners, um, and it's not to point fingers or cast blame anywhere, a lot of those claims that, the claims that we are ultimately responsible for, that we are aware of, arise primarily from automobile collisions. And as you might guess, your public safety divisions operate vehicles and do so in a much higher risk capacity than non-public safety entities do. What we don't know, what I simply don't know, and it's not that it's a grand mystery, I just don't know the answer to the question of other claims pending against constitutional officers that may be covered by other insurance. And I'll give you, the only example I'm aware of as we sit here, is the Sheriff's Department, the sheriff maintains a separate law enforcement claims insurance policy. There are claims that arise against the sheriff, the basic property casualty claims, car wrecks, things like that, those are covered by the insurance policy this board acquires. Claims that result directly from law enforcement activities, which would be excessive force claims, um, jail-related claims, those are what we refer to as law enforcement claims, those are covered by a separate insurance policy. We, being myself, nor your risk management department, is aware of all of those claims, we're just not in that loop. Um, but we would hope, I would hope that that risk analysis would also be made available to your constitutional officers to help them sort of get a hold on those potential problematic areas. Some are preventable, some may not be preventable, but I think, you know, if you have an option available to have that service provided to you, I think you should jump on it.
Thank you. Most, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Uh, if you would, Patrick, i- is, is my understanding, I guess, um, some departments or somebody insured, we are self-insured, what, what policy does that cover? Does it cover something like the car crashes or wrecks or something, where if we pay up to, what, three hundred thousand? where if we pay up to, what, three hundred thousand dollars or three, three hundred, thirty-three thousand dollars of damages, then the insurance policy just kind of help us kind of through it?
That, that's right. We have what is called a really high deductible insurance policy. So it's, it's not necessarily self-insured, for all practical purposes it may be. And that covers any claim for damages asserted against the Board of Commissioners or any department that reports directly to the Board of Commissioners. That would include things like car wrecks. It would include employment claims and things like that. So there are, but of all of those claims, all of that universe of claim, there is only one claim pending against one of your departments seeking money.
Correct. And I, I guess I said that, just, just to say this, is that we used to have insurance as far as cover some of those claims, but now we don't, because I, I can remember being guided a little bit by me just saying that we're no longer covered. We're self-insured, and I think we got seventy-five, eighty million dollars, sixty to eighty million dollars of excess cash, hopefully help cover some of that in the event that, you know, we get sued. Why aren't we working hard to try and find an insurance company to pay some of those bills, I think, for years? And running, time is running out. You've been telling we need to get some insurance. And we don't have it. So why can't we engage Mr. Massey or somebody to help us get that coverage? I think that's too much for us to counter, hold over the citizens of Newton County, pay for all of this, and we don't have the insurance. We used to, but we don't now. Why we can't get some more? I guess that's more or less the question that I'm asking. Because I think that's, that's a little too much, because we had to pay the insurance, whatever damages, then we had to pay attorney fees, and, and whatever else that might arise from something, an accident or something happening. And you can get an assessment, and that's good. I mean, Commissioner, I think that's a great idea. But we need to go to the, the main problem, that is get some insurance to help us cover some of these big bills. And I'm gonna just close on this, because I get talking, I know it's boring. I'm gonna close on this. I remember during budget time, I think you may have said that there's a lot of suits, that, and they were one of the reasons why we might, you know, we might do a rollback, or we might be participating in a rollback at this point. And I was trying to find out what they were, and I guess it's been answered.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Cowan, I got you. I'll get you in one second. So our, our insurance is, is not, it, it, Mr., our, our county attorney explained it as we're self-insured up to, we're all self-insured through our deductibles, right? It's just that we have high deductibles. We have higher deductibles, because the insurance, we are a high risk because of our, our past, our claim history. I'm in the insurance business, and it is a tough market right now. I mean, you've seen your insurance bills. So they're, the insurance companies are, are looking to minimize risk, and you're less of a risk if you pay more in a deductible. So we, we, Mr. Hayes and McGriff Agency were worried this time. I know Pam's here, she can speak to this if she has to. But they were worried this time that we were not gonna, we're gonna be non-renewed on our auto. We, we were not. They kept us. But it, it's tough to find insurance companies that'll take, that'll take clients that, that have a bad insurance history or claim history. So it's, it's just a tough market, and I know we're doing what we can. Mr. Massey is working with Mr. Hayes and McGriff Agency to, to work through some of these issues. But Mr. Hayes had offered this free risk assessment, audit, whatever you want to call it, so he can come into our departments, all departments, constitutionally if they want them. That'll be up to the constitutional officers. But I would strongly urge us to take advantage of anything, especially if it's free. So that's kind of where we are. Mr. Cowan?
Thank you, Stan. I think, just to answer J.C.'s question, why can't we get insurance companies to look at this? We are a poor risk, okay? We've had high experience, and quite frankly, they, they don't really want to bid it, or if they bid it, it's gonna be so high that the, and we're already seeing it with the deductibles going up tremendously. That's the only way you can get, get coverage for it. But honestly, the insurance companies are passing on to somebody who's a little bit better risk than Newton County is.
Commissioner Sanders?
I think you kind of answered, well, state, made a statement that I was gonna ask. How were the constitutional officers feeling about this, weighing in on this? Because I know we can't control what they do. So you stated that they wanted to assess the various departments, but have we included the constitution? Because we have four of them. Have we included them in this conversation to see where they wanted to go with this versus making decisions without them? And the other question I have is, when someone says they're offering a service for free, what are they looking for after the free? That's always a question. Because they're not just gonna come in here to assess the county or assess the risk without wanting to be a part of the county or getting a contract in the future. So no company wants to come for free just to be saying, hey, I just want to assess your department. There is something that they're wanting beyond the free.
I can answer, I can answer both of those questions, I believe. We, this was something I added to the agenda just to have this discussion. The constitutional officers have not been brought into this conversation yet. So it'll be up to them, just like it'll be up to Mr. Cooper, decide whether we won't, they won't take advantage of it. This, the, the audit or the risk assessment is offered for free by McGriff. There will be a charge to McGriff, from what I understand. But to answer your question, there are services beyond the audit in what he identifies. He can come in and help mitigate those risks, and that's a fee. That would be a fee. But we don't have to take advantage of that.
So we currently have an insurance company, and our deductible is a million. Am I correct? No?
It, it depends on the nature of the claim. It's varying different amounts depending on what type of claim it is.
Okay.
We, we can get you a summary of all the, but it's a little too, too many claims for me to lay them all out to you right now.
So we're paying a premium to this insurance company, am I correct? So we're paying a premium, and the other company comes in for free wanting us to pay them a service, because they are an insurance company, am I correct, as well? Or they just...
They, they work for, they work for the agency that brokers our insurance.
So the same company, but a different division of that company?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be double the amount that we, if we happen to go with the company that's offering, well, the division of that company that's offering the free services, that would be an additional cost, plus the premium and whatever they offer, and we going towards what they're wanting to add, the department that they're actually gonna be looking at.
If, if they identified something that they're, that they can help us mitigate, then it's written in the little document I brought with me. There is a fee if we take advantage of it. We, once they, they give us the audit results, we do with it what we want. We can, we can figure out how to, our risk department can figure out how we address those. We don't have to use anybody else. If, they're just coming in. Dean, Mr. Hayes called me. He's, he's trying to keep us insured. This is, this is not a, this is a matter of us being able to hold on to Travelers, because nobody else is gonna take us. We're trying to hold what we got. And that's the way he put it to me. He lives in this county, he's always lived in this county. And he, he cares about this, I can tell you. So it, it's, it's a matter of, of the us trying to hold on to what we've got and not lose, not be non-renewed, especially in our auto.
How long have we been with Travelers? Does anybody know the amount of time we've been with Travelers?
Come up here, Pam, if you don't mind.
It's multiple, multiple insurers, depending on what the insurance is for.
So I just wanted to reiterate, because what's gonna happen? People are thinking that it's only one department occurring situations. They're looking over, over years of time that we became a risk, am I correct? Not just the past couple of years. They're looking at years, probably beyond this board, that we've probably been a risk.
Five years.
Okay. I just want to make sure we iterate that, because people will put out there and say, oh, this board created this or whatever, who was that office? So I want to make sure that they know they're looking at a amount of time that this county has been at risk.
Right. And we don't, we have Travelers for one of our policies. It is for our cyber poli, I mean, our crime policy. But we have, Old Republic has our auto and our, I'm sorry, I'm a little hoarse today. And for our public officials. And then we have Arch, we have Greenwich. There's like seven or eight different companies, so, that have our different policies. Everything from auto...
Who is our, who has our auto, Pam?
It's Old Republic.
Okay. So I guess that's what Dean, Ms. Trace, was telling me. He was, he was quite surprised that they held on to us, that they didn't, they didn't non-renew us. Was, I, was that, that was the company he was talking about?
We're bringing our renewal to you all in two weeks. So it's gonna come in two weeks, and we'll kind of go into detail with our renewal process and, and where we are in that.
But I can tell you, whether it be an individual, a company, or a, a, a public, or a city or a county, you have an insurance history. And it's like a, you could compare it to a, a credit history. And, and all, all of it goes into a database, just like it would for your credit score. And all the insurance companies get a peek at it. They can see it. So, Mr. Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I know just, and I don't remember the exact period of time, but I believe it was maybe three, four, maybe five months ago, when this board actually did approve to bring Mr. Massey back to kind of help us assess these risks. So since that has been done, has Mr. Massey had an opportunity to collect any data to be able to provide to us on what things we can do to mitigate some of those risks at this time? Because I don't know if the board has seen that data as of yet, because, and the reason why I'm asking this question, and I could be incorrect, correct me if I'm incorrect. It sounds like, once again, we're duplicating reviews or assessments. So it sounds like we're having multiple individuals or companies doing the exact same thing. And I could be incorrect.
Mr. Massey was, is working with us as far as a review of all of the insurance policies and processes, and he's been involved in that. He will be here, I guess, in two weeks to provide the renewal process and, and give a report at that time. And McGriff, from what I understand of the assessment, is that, I mean, it's supposed to be part of the insurance broker review that they'll do, and that they will offer it to all of the departments, to come in and do an assessment of that department with all their policies, processes, you know, anything from the sheriff's office to public works, and just kind of see how they can help us. The main goal is to reduce our claims. You know, so if we do reduce our claims, then we will reduce our premiums. So that's...
Let me just say, most importantly, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Massey are working together in collaboration. We've had meetings. So there will be some documentation provided to this board and references said issues.
Perfect. Thank you. That was my question.
Thank you. I, oh, go ahead, Ms. Sanders.
I just have one more statement, just to be fair, because I know if I was a constitutional officer, I would like that courtesy. So I would like this conversation to be had with those four constitutional officers, so they can be on board with it, and then we can come back together and decide on what we need to do. Because speaking on behalf of them, and they're not here and haven't even had the conversation, it's, it's kind of not a situation we need to be in if we're trying to work together with the constitutional officers.
And we've had some conversations, but this, I guess, is why it's been brought here today, because it's just a service that there will provide to anyone that's interested.
Ms. Commissioner Henderson?
I'll be brief. I would, I would like for, since we hired Mr. Massey, to maybe come in and give us a somewhat of a recommendation to as far as what we may need to do, hopefully, hopefully to create a path to get back on track, whereas we can encourage some insurance company or the same insurance company to pick us back up. Because I had thought at one point that Travelers Insurance had dropped us for whatever reason. But now I'm finding there's a lot of, I guess, parts that go with it because of the claims that we were asking to be paid.
Travelers decided to do a non-renewal two years ago on our auto and some other policies. That is correct. But we do have one small policy with them still.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell.
You're welcome.
You did have to get up here after all. All right. That moves us to the portion of our meeting, the citizen comments on the topic of their choice. Citizen comments, topic of your choice. You have three minutes. State your name and address for the record.
Maya Allen, District Three. Given the fact that we spoke today in reference to Spring Hill Park and to District Two's Park, I'd like to also ask for the umpteenth time if we can get the park for District Three on the agenda, specifically speaking with persons who have properties available. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment? Comments of your choice. You have three minutes to do so. That portion of our meeting is closed. At this time, I'm gonna lead off the commissioner comments, if you guys don't mind. And I would like my comments to include the introduction of our new interim county board commissioner chair, Mr. Lanier Sims. Mr. Lanier, if you'll come down, please. Mr. Sims was appointed by the governor last Friday as our new interim chairman. I would like for you to welcome him, first chance you get, and we look forward to working with you, Mr. Sims. And I will give you this seat gladly. How about that?
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, two weeks ago, I did not ever imagine I'd be sitting here tonight. First, I'd like to thank all the citizens that have reached out to me over the last few weeks with encouraging words, with prayers, with thoughts. I want to thank, like I said, thank, thank those citizens. Also, I want to thank many of the employees that have reached out to me as well. Today, we had a swearing-in at three o'clock, and it was extremely humbling. I count probably forty employees was at the swearing-in. And like I said, very, very humbling for me. As I take on this journey, I think back to something my father told me as I left as a seventeen-year-old getting ready to go to the Navy. He told me, he said, God gave you two ears and one mouth. So listen, listen well, talk, talk little, but listen more. So the next couple of weeks, that's what I plan to do. I plan to get with the county manager. I plan on getting with each and every commissioner and listening. I want to get with the department heads, employees, and most of all, citizens to hear your concerns and how can the office of chair help in any way. As I'm reaching out to commissioners, ladies first. I've already talked to Ms. Sanders tonight. Hopefully, our schedules will work this week, so we can start that. I love to sit down and have a, a ride-along with each commissioner in their district to, to see those concerns. I've even had calls over the weekend from some citizens with some concerns already, some that I guess still have my number and email from, from years past. So I look forward to addressing that. I am a very open door. Um, uh, so if anyone, once I get my county phone number, um, I'll definitely have, uh, that made public, uh, my county email. Um, if anybody has any concerns, um, or any way that the Office of Chairman can assist you, uh, please reach out to me. Um, we're all here, we're all passionate about this county. Um, each and every one of these commissioners up here, they're very passionate about moving this county forward. And that's all I wanna do, is be the bridge builder to continue moving this county forward. Noon County's brightest days are ahead of us. Um, so with that, I wanna move over to commissioner comments. Um, District Two?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, first of all, I'd like to welcome you back. Um, it was an honor and a privilege to, um, take the seat that you retired from and do my best to build upon, um, what you left for eight years, uh, and truly do my best to be an asset to this board, uh, as well as an asset to District Two, uh, enhance the lives, uh, of District Two as well as our community as well. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to, uh, welcome you back. Uh, I'm looking forward to working with you, um, to, uh, really continue the positive momentum that I believe that our, uh, county is moving in. Uh, and I wanna make sure that I'm a part of continuing to move, uh, in a positive direction, uh, so that we can go to the next level. A lot of counties are looking at us. And so, I think if they can see us, uh, maybe they can glean something from, uh, what we're bringing together. And so, thank you, uh, for saying yes, uh, to coming back, uh, to helping us move in a, a positive direction. Uh, and I'm looking forward to just taking our community to the next level. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, District Three, Ms. Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few, uh, announcements. First, I wanna thank my neighbors in District Three. While I was gone, taking my daughter back to college, I had a homebuyers event that was with the DCA in conjunction with the Georgia Dream. And I didn't realize that I overbooked, and my daughter was like, "Mom, you're supposed to be on a plane with me." So, thanks to those residents who took over for me and held it down with the DCA and had that event at the, uh, West Side Precinct. It was about thirty families that was there to be able to be assisted from being first-time homebuyers and learning about the Georgia Dream Program with Department of Community Affairs, providing, uh, down payment assistance, and getting them out of apartments so they can become homeowners. So, thank you so much. I appreciate you all who had my back while I was gone. Also, over the weekend, I had an opportunity to be the delegate for, um, local progress, as well as a leader going to, attending the Policy Link Conference that's here, that was held here in Atlanta. And so, it was about five thousand policymakers, progressive leaders, that's what it's all about, nonprofits who actually work for the community and make change. And it was an honor for that, and it was also an honor to have Janelle Monae come in and congratulate us. So, that was a huge honor to have a, a celebrity come in and thank us for the work that we're doing. On September twenty-eighth, it is the Fourth Annual Ladies Retreat from eleven a.m. to four p.m. at Turner Lake. And I'm looking forward to, we already, like, four seats from capacity. So, I'm, I'm shocked at that, 'cause it was just put out about three days ago to registration. So, I'm looking forward to fellowshipping for the fourth year with the ladies of Newton County. Thank you.
Thank you. District Four?
Thank you, Ms. C. Uh, looking, I, uh, I remember when you, uh, first came on the board as District Two, uh, County Commissioner. And, um, like you said, just a few seconds ago, that we were all passionate then and passionate now. And, but one thing I can, I can say about you can, uh, like I said, Commissioner Sam, um, Ms. C., is that, you know, I've, I've rode over the years to know your wife and your family, and the kids that once were small, and now they are big. Probably like mine, now grown. But, um, you're always had an open mind, open heart, and you're a good listener. I agree what you wanted to say. I look forward in the pleasure of working together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. District Five?
I'm just glad you're back.
Thank you, sir. Uh, county manager, do we have a need for executive session?
There's no need, sir.
All right. With that, I seek a motion to adjourn. Motion's second, all in favor? We adjourn. Have a good night.